And by the name of Fred Hazel combined with inventory of the African American population throughout Binghamton. It was an amazing study. And that's a copy of it there. He counted every African American person, every family, wrote down what they did, if they had heat in their house, if they had a running alarm, everything about the African American population throughout Binghamton. And the interesting thing is, in fact, it was not just him, it was permission on our retired population in New York State, from council, social agencies, and the interracial association. They all worked on it, but he was the driving force. And it's interesting that the total African American population of Binghamton in 1938 was eight hundred and twenty-four. Fifty-five percent of those lived in the seventh ward, and most of those lived either on Sherman Place, which is the new name for the old name for Lyle and Sausa Hennessy That section there is what we're talking about. And in that section, the shaded part, is called this park. In the sixties, there were twenty-nine retail centers in the seventh ward, mostly located on Sausa Hennessy and Lyle. Several small shops, six restaurants and bars, six small grocery stores, and two barber shops. All right. And that line is where the park is today. And it's a historically significant area. AME Zion Church, Ethel AME Church, the first two African American churches in Binghamton were right down the street. I circled the fourth, usually called the fourth ward, the Carroll Street School there. Carroll Street School was known as the White School. But then in 1945, a new school was built, the school number eight, for African American students. And it was on the back lot of the other school there, Carroll Street School. Okay, that was 1845. 1861, they moved those classes to actually a house on Holley Street. So then that spot was vacant. And chugging out of that, 1872, they integrated African American students with other students in the Carroll Street School. But anyway, that's where it all started. Where that little African American school was, became Carroll Street Playground. And that's in 1872. So our park goes back one hundred and fifty-three years. Originally, it was Carroll Street Playground. Okay, 1926, Christopher Columbus Park was built. In fact, I knew that a hundred years ago today, and I don't know if you've ever seen that. But right now, in the newspaper, are announcements all about Christopher Columbus Park, how it's all coming together, it's almost done, and shortly after, in next spring, it will open up. Well, it did. And at that time, Carroll Street Playground was expanded and became Sherman Place Park. So the second name, Sherman Place Park. And you notice the street up there that now is called Whitney Street. It had four different names over the years, but again, it was eventually Lyle and. So in 1928, new playground equipment and waiting pool is installed, the park is renamed Carroll Street Playground. 1928 park is formally dedicated to the children of the seventh and eighth wards. 1955, residents are relocated, the park is expanded, and reopens in 1959 as Christopher Columbus Park. And during the sixties, more residents are displaced as a result of urban renewal. And here's the quick summary. The park dates back one hundred and fifty-three years to 1872. It's had three names. Carroll Street Playground, which was named for eighty-five years. Sherman Place Park, which was named for two years. Christopher Columbus Park, named for sixty-six years. And just a couple of words about urban renewal. I'm going through the history of the park and the seventh ward. I can't not mention urban renewal affected it. So just real quickly, bear with me for a couple of quick slides. Downtown Binghamton would be made a nice place to live, new housing for the old, this is an artist's conception of the seventh ward. Master plan in 1961 was to rehabilitate most of the seventh and eighth wards to provide good housing in the central area of the city. City should create a desirable living area by improving existing facilities, constructing nuance, rehabilitating some restability, and widespread clearance and redevelopment of light intersections. All right. Construction of seven hundred and sixty-six units of housing in downtown Binghamton to ease the plight of the stores of families to be uprooted by the redevelopment program. Two hundred and six units of the seventh ward, hundred public housing in the seventh ward, sixty units of moderate housing in the seventh ward, and four hundred in the eighth ward. A lot of people with this place. And this is interesting, this is back to that first slide that I showed you of the seventh ward. Look how densely populated it is, all the houses, all the shops and businesses. But if you overlay a current Google map over that, that's what you get. Here, I'll do a little mystery play of that. It was very dramatic. But we heard of the renewal and the construction of the seventh ward. And then I'll do the same thing for the eighth ward here. That's Ben and now. So what are you thinking? That's the history of the park. Yeah?
The numbers of the residents who were displaced, can you possibly go back to that time? Do you have a question as you're playing?
I didn't give a number of how many were displaced. I gave a number of how many new residences were going to be built.
Roger, who's the Sherman, Sherman's? Park and Sherman's.
You had to ask that.
Being there anyway, it seemed like you had to make sure that the whole community was with the top of the conversation. We just wanted to make sure that we were there.
Yeah, yeah. She can take up that. Can I now put this thing so we can hear it?
Could we add all the other organizations that were both displaced?
That would be a problem. I'm not sure.
Let me see what I can offer.
I don't think you kind of set it up like us against them. I love statistics, but I didn't get my best grade in. But you haven't given a full number of how many, all the people have missed it, or have missed the entire people up here. Just get to it.
All right, so before we get into the dialogue, this first portion is for a presentation. And so we will definitely have time for community feedback, but for right now, we just want to get through both the presentations first.
It wasn't just feedback, it was questions. He gave us information about the fourth. You know, it's very technical. I don't think I'm alive, but you know, it's not everybody has something. So I have to keep that one.
Right. So there's a way for you to capture that question, write it down, or put it in your phone and ask it during the community comment section. We have it in the chat.
People should just speak up to the top.
Right, exactly. Exactly. So we're trying to keep it calm, trying to be calm again, and respect each other.
Just to make it sound good.
Yes.
When you set it up though, when you're saying you just gave your own number, you don't give a whole picture.
We're asking, please respect the rules of the house too. So we all pay and abide by the same rules. If you can do that, right? All right. So yeah, so this is a city council meeting. Technically, they are allowed to ask questions, but we are saving the community comment section for after the presentation. So again, you do have time to ask your questions, but just during the appropriate time. Okay?
Well, anyway, that's the quick history of the park.
That was a quick dialogue. All right, next we'll have Dr. Bryant, who will share the preliminary information that was gathered by a community survey administrator.
I'm Shiana Bryant. I'm one of the associate deans at the College of Nursing and Health Sciences. And I'm going to let my research assistant introduce herself.
Hi, everyone. I'm Imani Mataria. I was a C-12 summer scholar this summer, and I got to work under Dr. Bryant to help her do her research about Columbus Park.
So we're going to skip over our background because we...
Right, if you want to communicate, we have to hold a little honor.
Yes. Yes. We're going to skip over our background because the historian has provided that context. We're going to talk a little bit about the methodology of the survey.
Yeah, so if anyone remembers, there was a Juneteenth event held at Columbus Park this summer. And so at that event, I did a survey to everyone who attended, asking questions of where they lived, whether they were around the park, whether they were relevant, whether they think it should change. And yeah, so today we're just going to raise our results.
And from that survey, she had paper copies. So most of the people who responded to the survey at Juneteenth completed a paper copy. But we also had a QR code that anyone could use their phone or computer to respond to that survey. And after Imani's presentation at the NWA CP meeting in July, we sent it out on the nurse's disservice. And then there was a publication about considering renaming the park. And that same link to this survey was included on this. And so as of last Wednesday, there were two hundred and eighty-one online surveys.
So for my first question, it was just deal with Columbus Park. And on Juneteenth, fifty-four percent of people said no, or forty-five percent of people said yes.
And as you see, when you compare it to everybody, the other people responding to the survey, the majority of the people who responded didn't live near Columbus Park.
My next question on Juneteenth was, are you a Binghamton resident? To which sixty-two point four percent of people said yes.
And a little over fifty, almost fifty-seven percent of the rest of the respondents were Binghamton residents.
Next, on Juneteenth, I asked how people felt about the name Columbus Park, to which twenty-eight percent of people felt positively, thirty-five percent of people felt neutral, and thirty-five percent of people felt negative about the name.
And you can see how they differ from the people who responded mostly on that night. The majority of them, almost forty-three percent of them, had a positive feeling about the name Columbus.
Next, we asked if Columbus Park should be renamed, to which it was a result of almost eighty percent of people on Juneteenth who wanted to change the name of the park.
And when we compared it to the rest of the respondents, the majority of people, about fifty-two percent, responded no. And we said, if we were to rename, what are some names that we could consider renaming the park? And that was like a write-in. And we just looked at some of the names that got more than, more than one write-in, because we can't have a complete list at another time of all the names that people came up with, about why, of who the name, who it could be named after. Oh, this is, sorry. Who should help rename the park? You can see, both groups felt like it should be the community, and from here tonight as a community. And then this next slide, it's like there's so many names, that we just highlighted some of the ones that had more than, that had five or six votes. And then our last slide...
Can you read them, please? Thank you.
No, we can't see the screen.
Sorry, everyone. So our last question was just to ask if we were to rename the park... Imani, can you just take us to the microphone? Yes. Our last question was just to ask if we were to rename the park, should we name them? We just asked for suggestions. Most people suggested Billy Anderson. And for anyone who doesn't know, Billy Anderson was a local activist for the black community in Binghamton, who recently passed. So people thought she would honor the park well by naming it after her. The next was to just name it location-based, like it happened in the past. Like, for example, Binghamton Community Park, or something like that. And lastly, people suggested Asana Shakur, which I believe there was a different community vote back in 2021, also around Juneteenth, in which the community voted to rename the park Asana Shakur. So that's why a lot of people thought it should be that.
And as you see, many of the, many of the names from the Juneteenth respondents are on the list for the people who responded.
All right. Can we give a hand for our presenters? We're so... And so for individuals who have not had a chance to participate in the survey, today is your chance. Here is the survey QR code, so if you have your phone, make sure your QR reader is on. And so all you have to do is hold up your camera over the QR code, and then you should see a link that pops up underneath the QR code on your phone. So if you... Okay. Also, for those who signed up, you put your email on the side sheet, the survey will also be distributed to your email. So make sure you sign in if you do not have some capability to do the QR code. All right. So, the time that we've all been waiting for. All right. So, I just want to appreciate your time and your patience for us to kind of set the context of our conversation. Because there's...
I can keep talking, I'm looking over there.
So yeah, so it provides a little bit of context for our conversation, because, you know, especially with the topic that has so much, you know, emotion and so much art wrapped around it, it's easy for us to fall into what we know, what we know, or what we feel about the topic at hand. So it's good for us at least to have a baseline of, you know, what the facts are, what the, what the history is of the area, so that when we engage in a conversation, we can do so from a level of knowledge and understanding. Amen? Amen. All right. So, the rules of engagement. No, seriously. So for the community input, input section, what we are asking is for individuals to first come and stand either over here or over here, so that Mike can get to you, because as you can see, we have the Pinocchio Effect going on, we got strings on us, so we can't go too far. So yes, and we want to make sure that everyone can be heard. So yes, if you have a comment, and you've been called upon, please come either right here or right here, depending on where you are sitting. We are asking for comments to be no more than three to four minutes. Okay? We want to give people opportunity to ask questions, we want to give people opportunity to speak. So we will not be able to do that if one person or two people, you know, take control of the entire time. So we're asking to keep comments or questions to three or four minutes. And we will have a timekeeper. All right? All right. So, I need to see your hand, you have a question?
Well, I just, you were saying comments, I want to go up to you to answer questions. Somebody will answer questions.
Yes, yes. And our presenters, are you able to answer questions from the community? All right. All right, where's your... Okay. All right, all right. So with that being said, I think we can go ahead and hold it in the city council. Oh, is the question before the instructions, or question to speak?
I just want to speak.
Okay. So city council, can you kind of help me, like, see the hands?
Absolutely.
All right, so we can go ahead and keep this in order. So any, any other questions about the process before we get started?
I'd like someone to act woman to the, to see what's happening. Like, why does someone, where does the organ statue fucking...
So, all right, so let's do this. The recommendation is made for people to line up. So if you can, for those who'd like to speak, get a line right here. And for those who want to come this side, can get a line right here, and we'll go back and forth, side by side. What, oh, it could be a question, a statement, whatever you want.
Do you want to come?
Yes, I'll, we give them all of the people who want to get up and get a line. All right, and again, we're asking for everyone to be respectful, to be loving. And so if someone's talking, you know, be quiet, not interrupt. And I'll listen to the finisher, understand. If you would like to say something, please feel free to get in line. If you're willing to make sure that you can hear something. All right, city council, all right, one more thing. City council would like to know first name, last name, if you are a Binghamton resident. Okay? So for the record, city council wants to know first name, last name, and if you're a resident, I'll see your name. All right. So all right, Joe, we're about to get started. So thank you for your cooperation.
Are you going up?
No, I'm just going to go that way. What I want to do.
That's because you're smarter than everybody else here.
Sam, can you hear me? Yes, okay. Okay. Hello, my name is Brendan Brown. I'm a resident of Brute County, but I lived in Inwell, New York. I'm a retired behavior therapist. And IBM moved my family to Indicott, New York. We joined a large group of first-generation blacks in industry. We are an in-transit family, no relatives, school, just never knew or visited Indicott, New York. However, once hired by IBM, my husband was an active Vietnam veteran. IBM was my life while my husband served in Vietnam. Now, I told you all this so you would understand my connection. When we moved to IBM, when we moved to Indicott, Inwell, we were welcomed with a package of information. Do any of you know what that package was? It was called a welcome wagon. And information was shared with us. And in this package was faith-based information, school information, college/university information, hospitals. Now, the faith-based information was what? Trinity AME Zion Church. I'm living in Inwell, surrounded by churches, Catholic churches, Presbyterian churches. But AME Zion was the church that we selected for. And that was, as we facilitated with the AME Zion Church, what it really was, families stand up for. And in understanding where the AME Zion was, we met Billy Anderson, Reverend Glenn Blair, who was a teacher at Union Indicott High School, or U2 School District, where my kids attended. And that continued the link with Binghamton and Inwell. From there, we met major contractors, we met people that worked at Saint Link, black people that worked in St. Lincoln. But we all celebrated with Trinity Columbus Park, is where we have our holiday celebrations, our fun times. You couldn't function without Columbus Park. And you couldn't function without that link, that went from home, faith community, Trinity, members of Trinity, they got us involved in the community. When we moved here, there were limited resources, but people at the church told us about barber shops, where we could purchase black hair care. All of that was in this community. And I treasured this community. I treasure my relationship with Trinity AME Zion. Because if I wouldn't have had it, where would my kids be today? They all have that memory of Trinity and Columbus Park. I want to do everything that I can to keep that memory active and alive. And I want us all to know the history. You cannot live in a community without support.
My name is Rich Muji. I live at 12th Road and Roy Street in the city of Binghamton. During my twelve-year tenure as mayor of Binghamton, I often emphasized that we are truly a special community. There are many reasons, but the most significant is that we are a racial, ethnic, and religious mosaic. The diversity creates a vibrant community where each culture contributes its unique traditions and values. The neighborhood we are in this evening highlights that dynamic as different racial and ethnic groups call this area home over the last hundred and fifty years. While the demographics have changed, it's important to note that many of the touchstones of the Italian immigrant experience remain anchors in this neighborhood. Within a block of here is St. Mary and the Assumption Church, a thriving, multi-ethnic parish, where on weekends, it's not uncommon to hear... where on weekends it's not uncommon to hear Italian and English spoken as parishioners greet each other before and after mass. Also in proximity are the Sons of Italy Live and the Busseze Club, places of fellowship, camaraderie, and ethnic pride. One of the reasons discussed for remaining in Columbus Park is to recognize the African-American community that has deep roots in the neighborhood and the city. There's no doubt that the African-American community has been a vital piece of our city's racial and cultural mosaic and is certainly very deserving of recognition. Their progress and contributions are truly impressive, especially when you look at the harsh reality of their experience. Africans were brought here against their will and chains, suffered inconsequential horrors of slavery, followed by systematic discrimination and pervasive prejudice. I think everyone here agrees the ideal of celebrating our African-American community is important. We disagree on what was the appropriate way to do it. For advocates, Rahubi Columbus's name in the park is an easy revision. He's an anti-weighted figure who is viewed by some as controversial. But the reality is that Columbus and its legacy go much deeper for the Italian-American community. Columbus had become synonymous with the Italian-American immigrant experience. The journey was not easy for Italian immigrants. They faced hardships, prejudice, discrimination, and even exploitation. They were at the bottom of the social scale and needle jobs were the ones most commonly only available to them. As the sonny grandson of Italian immigrants, I learned firsthand of the trials and tribulations of their experience. During these struggles, Christopher Columbus became a symbol of pride and achievement. He became an entitlement of the Italian-American heritage. Many historians rank the discovery of, his discovery as one of the two most important events of the last millennium. And he is one of the two most important to have lived during the last thousand years. With that assessment and federal recognition of Columbus in the form of a national holiday, you can understand why Italian-Americans would have a difficult time replacing him. Beyond that, Columbus is a validation for all of us that their unique history, culture, and traditions became meaningful building blocks in our nation. This is why Columbus is famous, not because he was perfect, but because he represents something enduring: courage, faith, exploration, and the belief that a better world can be found beyond the horizon. Discussions regarding the name change, one of the concepts highlighted was the change in the name of the park would be inclusive. Sadly, many of us see it in the opposite way. The name change would be exclusive. It would regain a poignant symbol for the Italian-American community. At the beginning of my remarks, I noted that Americans, African-American experience is a vital piece of who we are as a community. Most definitely, this good community is worthy of celebration. However, I believe it's counterproductive to honor one exceptional piece of a racial and ethnic mosaic by dishonoring or displacing another piece. Thank you.
Just to make a heads up to you, we always stay in contact. Laura and I worked on, I think we worked on, Laura and I worked on, we named Laura. We worked on the, it was a mobile bus station. We took William Moore monument at the bus station. I'll have time to talk about that. Also placed a monument, City Hall, Stephen Hand was a person who helped slaves, secured a field, and that's a little square monument, bronze monument, right by the police station. So working on this and placing a father's monument there with others at Columbus Park, a father was supposed to die, and boy, he was senior Binghamton. I grew up here. Sometimes I thought I was Italian myself. So I went to the Italian festivals. We grew up right there at Columbus Park East. The house is torn down now. They put in the garden. But I grew up as a kid there, I lived countless ways, you know. So I don't think I'm important, but more so important is issue. My father, again, was first black in the Civil. That was a struggle for him. He told me as a little boy, he passed away at age 91, I think it was. He says he left Alabama. He lied about his age to get into the military. He said, "You can have my father Alabama." He said, "Thank you so much for hardship." Where blacks were hung, blacks were tarred and feathered. He came up here and secured employment for the city. And that was a struggle. It seems like everything is struggling with people today. And also, I know there's a struggle for Italian-Americans. I studied history. I was a historian of the Brute County Historic Historical Society. I taught for 16 years or so at Brute Community College. I have a PhD. I have five degrees. I was in production of military. So I've seen it all. So I think I've done that somewhere in life where you're supposed to take your family five times over that for what your parents did. So I think I try to do that, honor my parents. Says honor your parents, if you can understand that. I try to understand, honor my father. And so by putting that monument, another place of honor to him too. And so I just think that is important that he's there. But they may not be against them. I think that's how, you know, those kids, but I didn't set it up. He gave us statistics, but he didn't give us the whole picture. How many Italians were here? Why did I speak this place? He said, "Oh, you knew." Well, you know, that's a lot. You know, have a whole master class on that. So those things were left out. I think I have other questions too, but I just think that probably should be the main person. You know, I knew Miss Anderson. I was a keynote speaker at her funeral. Why is that? As kids on Stanton Street right there, when she lived on the top floor, I heard it before. So I'm obviously proximal, like Forrest Gump was always there, had a hand there, Forrest Gump. So, and, you know. So I just think that each person should be there. Again, you give us information about those other people. So it's in my mind, some people said that one of the people that you nominated or was nominated had something to do with killing a police officer. I don't know if that's true or not. So we should know about the people. We should know how to handle those people before making decisions, informed decisions. And so that's where I am. I don't know global behavior, Stan, you know, but I just think he should be at the top. But I don't know, Christopher Columbus, I'm not in that fight. I'm not in that fight. I just think that, you know, he's all over the country. He has a bus downtown. He's just all over the country. And I think somebody in Indicott is it, maybe he has a street listener, Christopher Columbus. So he's all over the place. So he wouldn't be minimized by any since like, please not a follower or anyone else there. So, you know, that's where I am. We're smart people. We don't need to hate each other or get mad at each other. No passionate people. And he should be passionate. Yeah? Thank you.
Evening, everybody. My name is John Darrow. I'm a native son, native west side. And I wouldn't have anywhere else if I hadn't had any opportunities to do so. I truly like my community. I was a little surprised at the historical preservation. And Michael Lucre and I are very good friends, not just friends, but very good friends. I had expected the history of the area to go back much further and not just go to the mid-19th century. Is it reflective of the park system? Yes. Is it reflective of the history of the area? No. And I'm not Native American. I'm not African-American. I guess I'd be considered French-American, English-American, Irish-American, Scottish-American, or German-American, right? We've all had our bad times in America, where we've been to the bottom of the total bowl. And we're looking at Latinos coming in, having a terrible time right now. It is cowards to say, it's their turn, it's the way the system works. But ultimately, the truth is, it's the way the system works. You have to burn your wife into the segregation bars. What I find upsetting to me and the reason I'm here this evening is I find it culturally unconscionable that we have not gone back further in the history of our valley, which was so vitally important to the indigenous peoples. And yet we heard no reference to it in this oral presentation. This is the Two Rivers now, yet there is no park here to the native inhabitants. There is nothing mentioning the Five Nations. There is nothing mentioning the Iroquois name, Inland H. I cannot pretend to pronounce it correctly. I may take a stab at the homophobus status, but I know I am incorrect. And I think that if we are going to consider renaming a park in the city of Binghamton so close to the wetlands and the river systems and made it vital to our community, then we should put it at the top of the list, consideration for the indigenous peoples of our valley, which were eradicated under the Vincent Sullivan expedition. That's my comment. Thank you for your time.
I was a trans man here, staying here from Fort Worth County. Senior leader of the company here to advocate assembly. I just like to, I'd break it with the, I actually wanted to send a mission here and a black partner here. I just like to have a free name you guys can use. And the force of the old government, the workforce. These are my thoughts of a better identity. And you can learn that, I'll have it back.
Good evening. I'm Anthony Pierre Sato. Born in Sherman Place, which no longer exists. So Born in Sherman Place, which no longer exists, but it borders on the London's part. Then I moved the Carol Street around the border, which also borders Columbus Park. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about Columbus itself. So the name of this in Columbus. Columbus sailed over uncharted borders of the ocean on a never-before-travelled to an unknowable destination. The undertaking was obviously extremely dangerous and the possibility of never returning to the earth must have been on the mind of every crew member. He was on his way to meet up with the Genghis Khan in the Far East, but discovered instead what is known as San Salvador. It was an important enough discovery for him to have begun and complete this voyage four times. He used the same route each time. Astonishingly, the very same route which is used today. To help guide him, he made use of instruments which today would be considered ridiculously primitive: compass, hourglass, logline. Contrast that with how we operate nowadays. Many of us must rely on a multi-satellite navigational system barking at us every 20 seconds or so just to direct us to another part of town. Let us all agree, we not all agree that the navigational skills of Columbus were breathtaking? There has been a great deal of criticism, both in Columbus's own time and especially in later centuries, over the alleged brutality of his actions and the idea that the lands he claimed for Spain were in fact already inhabited and therefore stolen. These accusations beg for context. Let us visit any inhabited region of the globe and study its history. We will find that the region was fought over time and time again during the last several thousand years. And that in many instances, blood was shed and lives were lost. In effect, the land, in effect, the land was stolen not just once, but over and over again. These battles and concomitant takeovers were not gritty and quite often bloody. Exclusions should not be presented to these battles, but they are unfortunately a feature of the March of Civilization. No one's hands are clean. No one's ancestral lines are clean, not a single one. Columbus had to overcome many obstacles on his journey. After spending a month in city without settler land, the crew was terrified that they might never reach shore. The crew began to panic. There was even talk of mutiny. It was agreed that they would continue for three more days. No land was sighted during that period. The ships would return to Europe. Land was sighted on day number three. The voyage continued. They also had to predict, to deal with unpredictable weather. He lost his lead ship, the Santa Maria, when it ran aground on a reef near Hispaniola. That would be the island corresponding to the ocean and the northern part of Africa. One of the storms on his last voyage was so bad that Columbus was surfed that he and his ships would be lost in sea. So he rode up what they discovered, sealed his findings in a barrel, and tossed the barrel in the Atlantic in an attempt to preserve his findings for posterity. The storm bated. He also had very difficult dealings with the indigenous peoples. Some of these problems were caused by some of his own crew. Columbus was quite healthy during this period.
Is everybody crying? I can understand. I'm very outspoken. I don't offend anybody, but I'm trying to be as gentle as I can. First of all, I don't think I should turn my back to the audience. I think I should be shazing during the speech because it's the answer I would like to get. You heard all these big speeches. And if I were to ask, "Well, that's what did he say?" What did he say? This is not about Columbus. There's so much thing going on in this world. I'm an immigrant. I ain't got that much education in me. Columbus Park educated me. St. Mary educated me. Columbus School educated me. Why pick on Columbus? Why not pick on the school? Because you can't. One individual, two individual. There's nothing better to do. Or look at the little statue on front which is not there. A plaque, "We're going to remove Columbus." We have people dying in the streets all over the country, all over the world. Is this the best whoever come up with this idea they can do? If they are, I feel really sorry for them. And I really like to know where these people come from. Are they in Binghamton, elsewhere? And where might they have to speak if they're not from here? And another thing, Columbus, you all know, had three ships. This is an honor to most of you in here. And I apologize by using their word because I grew up with black people. I sleep with black people. Not the way you did. Back in, I came from here. The most nicest people in the world. We had off the same table, very respectable. The person that was the navigator, the cop, Columbus never came for America? Why you hate the guy? He didn't want to go under you or anybody else. What disease did he bring? It was the disease before he came. It was the pain that the need of the Santa Maria. The best navigator that he had was a black person. Columbus invited three times to show him the way. Columbus never knew the way the cop would have handled it. There was a guy, you look up on history and you can find that. And you want to say, "No, I meant, didn't deserve a pedestal." Because we never knew that. Why don't you put the bright guy who showed Columbus how to do here? He started moving this. This time don't bother anybody. Why don't you guys get a job and do something better? Now you guys, why would I have started? I am very well at defense. Not six, seven people, but they can be structured into beats who start that. And I'm very much against them. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. And thank you for all the lovely speakers today. My name is Mike Omeraccio. And I am a resident of the Tamaquitos Center and I am the president of Greater Binghamton Chapter of Unico. Well, I'm going to read to you today our statements that were made by the Unico National.
What association are you part of?
I'm new.
The Association?
Greater Bingham, the Association of Unico National. I'm the president of Greater Binghamton Chapter of Unico.
Mike, can you tell them what the acronym spells out?
Neighborless, neighbor, neighbors are black and we can all say it. Neighbors. Community. That's the word. I get it. I got it. That's the word. I got it.
Look it up.
There you go. There you go. All right, this doesn't count. Write my time, guys.
Give me an extra minute if you can tell us what it stood for.
All right, here we go. Unico National's base at Columbus is a symbol of heritage for Italians throughout the Rome. Columbus represents the intrepid spirit of Italian-American immigrants and their resentment against discrimination in the United States. Their Columbus holiday and its great achievements is viewed as a celebration of the history, struggles, and accomplishments of Italian-Americans who face significant prejudices when they refer to movement. Unico condemns vandalism and removal of Columbus statues and the remaining of parks and so forth, not as protests, but as hate crimes targeting Italian-American heritage. Separating the fake from fake history, organizations allied with Unico, such as Ainsley Columbus, reject the charges of genocide and atrocities against Columbus. They argue that modern critics often ignore the historical context of the time and the complex interactions between Europeans and indigenous peoples. Some defenders claim that Columbus cannot be blamed for the diseases that devastated Native American populations, noting that the diseases were transmitted inadvertently. Unico provides educational materials and investment plans to present what it considers the true and factual history of Columbus. This includes a universal Italian heritage curriculum developed with the New Jersey Italian-American Commission. Confering attacks by the positive message. Drop the hints, seek the truth. Unico and other Italian organizations use this slogan to frame criticisms of prejudiced attacks rather than legitimate historical concerns. Let's focus on exploration. Supporters emphasize Columbus's significant role in world history, highlighting his courage and historic exchange, his voyage and his share. Focus on the history of Columbus Park will see you from Columbus Park. Thank you very much. One more time, what's the name of the organization?
My name is Michael. My name is Craig McFarlane. Kingston University, Florida, junior year, senior month. It was about me as part of the seven, I recognize my three bears and two kind of executives, whether formerly and or informally. I've had a forty year career as being a service professional in university. And I've been a minister of a whole lot of young men, a lot of young women, a lot of children. After, and in addition to raising my own pride, this gentleman right here actually swore me in as president of the indigenous people. So I like the fact that he said something about my state. We can place blame. We can debate the history of everybody and anybody that was mentioned prior to those things that were shared. But the reality is, I became a boy of forty nine in basketball, efficient, and young boys and young girls who look like me, proficient, believe that they good at fishing, or believe that they could travel in those types of spaces. So when you ask the question of relevance of whether or not the park should be renamed, young people, the page have to turn so that they can have somebody that they know of that's relative versus those that are three thousand, three hundred, one hundred years of age or older. In my opinion, I don't think the park necessarily has to have one name. They could probably have probably three or four names. Mother Hughes, who was the founding party or person of the Martin Luther King Commission, could be somebody that the park could be named after. They have two or three local black churches who were first churches in this community, whether it was AME Zion, whether it was our few real Baptists. It could be Reverend Blair. It could be my wife's grandfather, Mr. Leslie Fields, Reverend Leslie Fields. And definitely Billy Anderson put me on the map. She challenged me to step up and do the best that I could do, to be the best that I could be, and introduced me to my Dukes, Mother Dukes out of New York City. Jesse Jackson came here. I was part of that campaign. So I mean, there's a lot of folks in this community that could actually have the name, could be blessed with it. I just don't believe that necessarily. It's my point. My point would be that it could have more than just one name. I recognize more than just one. Thank you.
You have the name of the organization? I don't, I don't think I know you all on it. Unity, neighborliness, integrity, charity, and opportunity.
All right, we're hanging up.
Anyone on this side?
Well, thank you, everybody. And I appreciate the time to speak and sort of talk to the people that we take into this park. Major Reddick, fantastic. My friend Craig McFarlane, fantastic. Appreciate the conciliatory tone. And the red folks, I'm the resident of West Side or on the South Side in a predominantly Italian neighborhood with the shadow of Anne Franklin's school. My neighbors, Zarmondo and Emily Mascherelli are over here on Southern Street a hundred years ago. To nominate the hero and icons name of Columbus Park would be a slap of faith to the Italian community that's here. According to the 2023 statistical atlas of the United States, I can't say that too many times, statistical atlas of the United States, thirteen point two percent for six thousand and eighty-nine Indian residents identified as Italian. The statistical atlas also reports that twenty-four point seven percent of N-Cot's population is Italian, mostly on the North Side. To take away Columbus's name is truly an insult to the Italian community. It is not inclusive, it's exclusive of this community. I talked to some residents, they grew up here on the South Side, but not right here. I talked to some people, tears in their eyes, deep emotion for Columbus. They identify, my Italian friends that I went to Bennington North of there. They love Columbus and soak love, and I'm Italian. Number two, to remove Columbus's name from Columbus will create friction and hard feelings between historic communities that share this community. So with respect and appreciation for Roger Luther today, I want to quote Broom County historian Gerald Smith, who wrote a fantastic article about Susswood Am Street. In the late eighteen hundreds, the black community began to gather in the Columbus Park area on Susswood Am Street. They put together the Great Trinity AME Zion Church and Trade School, both established on this very spot, I believe, Mr. Luther, wearing the same. That's the history that I greatly appreciate in a pastor's special. I know history of the AME Church. And it should be preserved and celebrated in some way, maybe with a fantastic statue within Columbus Park, but not by taking away the name Columbus. I don't know. It's just a little suggestion. The first pastor of the AME Church, what a landmark he is. Historic Underground Railway. It ran through here, through him. He did fantastic work. AME established the Trade School. In that article that Gerald Smith wrote from county historian, uh, previous to Mr. Luke Diller. So, the blacks came late eighteen hundreds, followed by the Irish and the Jewish communities around eighteen forty. Both made significant impact in this neighborhood. The Irish built St. Mary's Church and the Jewish, the Jewish community built a cute synagogue on Exchange Street. I don't know exactly where, but there. In nineteen twenty, the Italians came. They built a beautiful church right here to worship on these very grounds where this meeting stayed in place. Eventually, the two Catholic congregations would consolidate and move up to Porch Street in Fayette. It does impress me that the Irish, the Jewish, and the black community had common elements. They both suffered tremendous discrimination. Italians were hummed in the South. The Irish were slaves in this country. No one suffered more than the black community. But they share a history and a life that seems suffering. Let me crack it to you then. See, the ref, the ref is coming.
No church, full cocktail.
I don't want to pull a scuffle today. Let me just close with some things about Columbus that you may not have learned in school. He did not intend to replace the native people with Europeans or steal their land. He came here as an agent of the Spanish government to develop a trading post where he would trade with the people in China. And he thought he was in China. And he was gold for other things that Europeans had. But he didn't intend to replace the native people. Number two, he didn't intend.
Hi, um, good evening. Thank you for putting this on and I really appreciate it as we've seen this, it can be very, very contentious. Excuse me. This issue has sparked.
What's your name, I'm sorry?
Oh, my name is Mary Clark and I'm the resident of the city of Bennington. This issue has sparked significant debate. As Columbus is seen by many as a symbol of Italian-American pride and in others' view that I felt included as a figure associated with colonialism, oppression of Native American indigenous people, and almito of genocide. And so you think like, are there's two sides to this? And so you say, do we really want to, as a community, continue, what is a better way to do things? And I hope into New Haven, Connecticut. They, what they did, did not. But what they did in New Haven, Connecticut, to appreciate the symbolism of Columbus, but instead what they did was create a statue of many class that taught the history of the Italian-American community, of the struggle of coming into a community, immigrating here and doing that. I would rather see the history of the struggle of people who came to our community have that highlighted throughout the park as they did in New Haven. And also, how does the gentleman spoke, there's nowhere that honors the indigenous people of our community here at the Two Rivers. Let us create some historical significance here in our park and educate our community about the struggle of the Italian-American and the struggle of indigenous Americans. And let's change the name on the park to something, and there were many suggestions, Billy Anderson, who's in high time. Because this community is equally, this area is with the African-American black community holds the same pride as for the Italian community. I think you share a community here and that's something that we want to honor. And I would like to see us teach history on the platters of the Italian-American keep that aside here. Also of the indigenous community that actually existed before they ever had the correct name. And, and then really let's change the name to something that's modern. I know Major Bernad would the highest name you'd like to see. I love Billy Anderson. I love Richard Ozak, who worked in this community, you know, for many, many years. I just think we should think bigger and not make it a war, but let's have pride for our Italian community. Let's have pride for the indigenous community. And let's maybe to change a name that moves something more modern to our community. And that would be wonderful.
My name is Susan Buckman. And I have a question. I wanted you to consider, one, we don't need to replace your name there with another name. There's no reason why. Thank you. I'm sorry. There's no reason why we can't have a Columbus Park. But it doesn't have to be this park. If this park would speak to its neighborhood now in a way that would help young people be more energized, more confident of their identity and relationship to other members of their own identity in the community, that would be useful, I would think. Now, I also think that this organizational effort to examine the name is wonderful. To me, I don't think we have a name. What we need to bring is our consciousness of the names of our parks. I, I live very close to Margaret Street and there's a beautiful park and I take my great grandchildren to play and I don't know its name. We could have a name that then people who are the community, those people, um, those parents that even if it contains the idea of naming this community this park of urban renewable park. How about the history of it's of the state on the neighborhood? Or just, it's good to be thinking of these different ideas and to group them. I have one. Oh, I really should also know that I studied Columbus in my school and my children study Columbus. In fact, I think we even have a holiday that's called Columbus. And I think that my grandchildren know that and my great grandchildren are beginning to study also. Thanks a lot.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Brenda A. James and I live in New York, but I am a member of the Trinity African Methodist Episcopal Society Church. This is my pastor. And my grandmother Margaret came and my, uh, my grandparents and my father, my aunt and uncle all came up on us on Hadda Street. And my grandmother certainly was one of the, one of the people who had to leave the street and he, he removed the, uh, find it at home, I should say, this place. Thank you. Uh, all I have to say, this, these are my thoughts. And I really like, I call him Mr. Carnegie because he impersonated him as a pastor. Uh, I like that I do. He, uh, he brought up indigenous people and I said, oh, goodness, okay. I, it is, I hope this is holy ground. Our church, the first African Methodist church is here and Reverend Yulian Logan ushered people into freedom. This is a freedom, this is a special space. And he bred and poked and ushered folks freedom. And his daughter, Millie Logan, was one of the first. She was our first African-American educator here. She taught newly freed people to read and write. And this space is sacred. And I, I thought about maybe Logan Park and maybe Freedom Park. And maybe that would cover everybody. And maybe that would cover everybody, perhaps. Freedom Park, get along with it. Freedom Park. Those are my thoughts.
My name is Sarah Beaton. I am a resident in the south side of Bentonton. And, uh, I wanted to read for you tonight a quote from by Colome de los Casas. He was a priest, and he observed firsthand, uh, the violence that Columbus perpetrated on people's backgrounds. He wrote, "The pattern established at the outset has remained to this day, and the Spaniards still do nothing save tear the natives to shreds, murder them, and inflict upon them untold misery of suffering and distress, tormenting, parrying, persecuting them mercilessly." By some accounts, on the island of Hispaniola, there were several million people when Columbus arrived. He established several colonial administrations. By the end of his life, there were less than a thousand by some accounts. That, by all accounts, is genocide. And when I think about what it is to celebrate being a human being, I do want to look back, and I want to look at, you know, Columbus as this figure that explored, that went out and did, and across the sea. It fired my imagination, it's going to be awesome. But I have to also take seriously what history looks like from other perspectives. Now, we look at the pattern established, and we had slavery and oppression have done so much to damage so many lives throughout all of his time period. And I think there's no way that I can in good conscience not stand up and say, please, let's change the name. This name is not worthy of being celebrated because it also carries so much of his history.
Now, we better go back to school.
Yeah. You don't know, you don't, you don't know nothing about it. That's a hate crime. What do you know? Hey, shit. Did he knock that off when he said? Hey, hey, that's what we're here for. You guys are all the guys. Why does this get fifty people on the street, team, they come in here, and they make a vote? They don't even know anything about this park. Nothing about this park. They're lying, you're doing nothing about this park. How about the park? You're not done. You're not done. I get my...
Hold on, hold on. I'm saying this, I'm saying that, you're done.
All right. So, we've been doing good. I know the game is a kid's topic. There are many opinions, but we've been doing good thus far, and I would ask us to continue. So if there is any comments that need to be made, please feel free. You can come in, and you don't have a, have your turn of the mic. But while other people are talking, we can ask other people to just listen until you try to talk.
Good evening, everyone. I actually wasn't going to speak, but as I'm sitting here listening, my name's Jennifer Lestall. I grew up on the north side of New York, I now live in Bentonton, and I worked in Center City and spent many days at Columbus Park. I absolutely understand the Italian heritage. My family are the Cacciatore's. Cacciatore's Restaurant, that's my cousin. That's my grandma's sauce recipe that I learned to make at seven years old. So I understand the Italian heritage. Um, when I was growing up on the north side, everybody came to Columbus Park. It didn't matter what school you went to. I mean, I sat by that wall and sat, watched basketball games between Uwe, Bentonton, Estill, Johnson City, and this park really was holding a lot of memories. Really good memories for me. But I would hate to see something like this divide the community. I think it's so important, as my neighbor have said, to celebrate all that this community holds. I think as Brenda, Mary Clark said it, let's not forget about the history of Columbus Park, but recognize all of the richness here. And I was thinking of names too. I thought Unity Park, Freedom Park, but to represent all of the cultures in this community that made this community great. Not necessarily for giving Columbus Park, but let's celebrate all of us, and I were here, because we're the reason that this community is such a great place to be because of all of us in this room and a lot of folks that helped us get to this point. So I would hate to see this divide the community. But as I said, not forget Christopher Columbus, but we can call it Freedom Park or Unity Park, and put murals up or plaques or something to celebrate everybody that's come to this community and all the cultures that made this community so rich. So, thank you.
Thank you, this is short. On one of the steps, my understanding for this meeting is that we all hear each other's voices. You have not chosen the name, correct?
No.
Okay, it's just, I think, it's up to the city council to do that?
Yeah, we're, right now, we're just hearing from the community.
Okay, because I think there's a sense of, who's going to win?
Well, it's not.
No, it's not.
I'm going to do some fun, give a prayer, okay, I'll put this together. But that's getting in the smooch part.
I see, I give my time. Just wanted to clarify.
I grew up here, and I live across the street, and I understand everybody's feelings in a sense. Because growing up, uh, in this area, this community, I mean, even the guys that are coming forward, I can look at these guys now, you know, younger. So I understand how they feel, you know? And come up, and you just put one pitch against us, I would have said something too. You know, I mean, trying to, trying to avoid, which being people with you. But, uh, it needs to reflect something for all of us, even not, see, I did not take them in Columbus Park, but the park should reflect somehow. And I think we can all try to get along with them that way. I mean, I do Saint Mary's for pre- meals and weddings coming from the past. And it's awesome that the guys opened it up to us. And in the same way, to come over to the Zara here, to here, and be friends with people. I'm not showing anyone the way, not going to anybody under your bus. We can go both ways, and then people start getting against Columbus, uh, but I mean, I wrote history books, it doesn't reflect everything I, that, you know, everything that I heard when I was growing up as a kid. It doesn't, you know, reflect us a lot in a lot of ways. But we just want to be on the map, come on. That's all we're asking you. You know, I mean, even the people that are here as Columbus Park, I want to belong to it. You know, I like, I like the people who talks like go with it too. But I don't know, you're going to say, yeah, you're going to say your dad's name. But I like his name to reflect something. Because when we were kids, right in that park, you go in the balloon, and he had skates for kids that didn't have skates. They signed out basketball for kids that didn't have basketballs. And we all played, I, I learned to play hockey through some of you guys as friends. I didn't, we didn't know hockey. And then we started playing hockey with the Slavas and the Picoelis and everything. We all got along. We are enough to tell us the people in this room, in this city, to be able to work out a name for a park. There's too many of us, there's doctors and years and all other people. And, and it couldn't go another way, but we got to, we got to find peace. You know, I heard you say, oh, the best, and I want to say, they open. But I'm like, Lord, I'm sitting there going, we're doing all this, and nobody opened with praise. Well, we can't do it like that. You know, and I was looking, it's not a person there. You know, I mean, I just wonder where, where he is, you know? This is a big concern, um, for us, and I hope we can all summon this with peace, and there's no backlash, that nobody gets hurt. And you guys, I'm trying to keep the peace the best way we can. And we hope, we really hope that we can get this all and start reflecting some of the other names. Columbus all over the country. Let's reflect the other names with Columbus. And you guys say that if this, and there's, there's such a great name with it, let's share. Why not share?
If you would give us a little feedback, maybe somebody can bring us up.
I'm not seeing that, but I just don't want to...
It was a resolution to submit. And so we had a meeting, we had a meeting, we wanted the community to be involved. So this is the third step to Columbus.
Third step.
Yes, so we had, most R O presented, and then after the R O presented, we had a meeting over the next step, what we wanted to do. And we just wanted to change, wanted to happen, but this is the, this is the next step.
Did you guys decide to change the name?
We decided to change it.
I didn't say change the name. Now you decided to change the name?
Nothing is decided yet. We can't do that. We want the community to...
No, I, I understand. You said this is the third step. You took the first and second step, now you're going to have this to change the name thing?
No, no.
So any, any resident can submit a resolution? Yeah, so a resident submitted a resolution. We have a Columbus Board of Work session. After that, we decided as a council, let's hear from the whole community. So that way, it's not something we decide without any...
We ought to hear from the whole community. The, the history of how that park was named, that was community. The kids, the future leaders of this community at Columbus Schools...
Here's your microphone, can't hear you.
The future kids of this community at Columbus Schools in Saint Mary's voted on it.
Yes, and that's what we're trying to do.
So, so now you want to discount those kids? No, 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 if you want to change the name, you're discounting them.
No, we're not, we're not. We're having a discussion.
No, I'm saying, I'm going to say, okay, I'm going to say, if you vote to change the name, then you're discounting all those kids that did that. You're, you're discounting. So, I, I'm certainly, why do you want in this park? How's more good to the park? We didn't have, I don't know why, why it came to a divide. We never had a divide. Why does it come to a divide? Because you want to change the name for, you need, you need to have a reason to change the name.
We've had new kids, and we've had new leaders.
Yes.
So let's eat bar.
That's good, so this guy has reasons to change the name. Instead of putting up a sign, you know, putting up a flag, do something else. But then change the name of the park. What's the reason to change the name of the park? That's what I'm asking. I don't understand. I grew up here and started understanding.
I did, I did, it wasn't petitioned down online, I forgot the mention. And it, it, there's four hundred people that didn't vote to change the name of the park.
Okay, so a timeout, so let's, let's not break for a while, we've been doing good.
Okay, now, this is a timeout.
Well, I need to be prepared for all.
But now when he was waiting, it, it, to me, it looks like you've got an agenda. Now you're trying to get data to, to support the agenda. When he comes up here and shows the story, and feels that there was eight, and there was four hundred, he's basically goes four hundred and fifty people in, in that, when he showed this place. How many of the other, and that, that, this is the word that you're asking. But if you can't come in here and give, give this sort of data, try to skew it to your way, that's not fair. That's not fair to do that. So, that's, that's, and then he's given the sample size for your survey. That was such a close survey group. To use that for data, that's not data. That's data to try to support your agenda. That's not fair. That's not fair. If you were to have three, and did that same survey, you'll have ten times the difference. And that's not fair representation either. So if you want to do this, you have to back through.
So, we're looking at about seven thirty right now, so I guess we have about fifteen more minutes of comments to move into our next steps. So, if you want to have a, a comment or reaction, feel free to just speak out there. We would love to hear your advice.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chuvani Spriggi, and I live in the city of Bentonton. In nineteen fifty-nine, Bentonton citizens from every corner of town sat down together and said, "This will be Columbus Park." Things center city, buzzing with kids, laughing, families voting, the entire town packing Columbus Park together. That wasn't just ink on paper. It was our grandparents' promise. This park, Columbus Park, belongs to everyone. And yes, Columbus is a touchstone for Americans of Italian heritage. Yet that playground, every day since nineteen fifty-nine, before and after, has always ended with Jewish, and Puerto Rican, and German, and Black, and Caribbean, and even Italian laughter, American laughter, not hyphenated laughter. It's baked into the ground that Columbus Park sits on. We do not need to erase that heritage to honor equally important voices in this community. The N W A C P included. The N W A C P's founding charter calls for social inclusivity between citizens of all backgrounds. That fight isn't against symbols and names. It's for seats for all Americans at the table. And here's the fact that we can't also raptup this in school. The symbol of Christopher Columbus binds and ties Americans of Black and Italian heritage, more than we know. Pedro Alonso Mino, an African navigator, in fourteen ninety-two, was the chief navigator of the Santa Maria. Columbus didn't marginalize him. He promoted him because of his skill. Mino returned with Columbus to the New World on his next voyage. And then after that, in fourteen ninety-nine, made his own voyage to the New World. And what is modern day as well. That alliance was real. It was messy. It was hard, but it was human, not a footnote. So keep the name we've carried for sixty-five years. Don't let one lens flatten centuries of history that bind us together. As the son of Italian immigrants, this is what Columbus Park means to me, and I know many of my neighbors and friends that are here today. Instead, as a community, let's work together. Let's add, next to a square, a park, something of equal stature in our community. Maybe something like the Jermaine Logan Commons, or Jermaine Logan Street, or Jermaine Logan Park, or any others of these great suggestions tonight. The Black abolitionists who revealed freedom under these very streets. Remember, that's not compromise. That is the dictionary definition of social inclusivity. Black history is American history. Italian history is American history. And Columbus Park is an American park. So stand for both histories. Unity is Latin. Choose love over lust.
Hello, everyone. I am a, uh, citizen of, 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 my name is, I wouldn't, uh, I'm a, okay? The reason why I'm talking, I worked at the Urban League, ten, seven, four, ten years. We have joined Saint Mary's. We have joined the Jewish folks in the community. The kids played together, worked together. We even had one of St. Mary's ministers on our board. So that, as a community, back then, we all lived together, played together, walked together. When the Chinese people had their outing, we joined in and prayed. Went to their, what you call their, every year they had. So, I, you know, as a stranger, I'm not a stranger really, but as a person that had enjoyed working at the T S N, enjoying, glad had one of your Father John, I know, of this church. We had Father John of this church, a key member on our board. So, we had been here, let's say, they had been here for years. We used to go down to the park. Columbus Park used to have basketball game all the time. Kids within our program, we had basketball tournaments. It wasn't the blacks over here or the whites over here. We joined together as a, what, a whole community. I am the one who went to the city. A couple of the community people to have King Rice's name to the park. We begged the city, you know, to do this. Why? Because we wanted to be a community where someone came from this community. This community where blacks, whites, fans, everybody's on together to be recognized. Now, the argument, the name of the park. I don't give a name to the park as long as the kids in the community can enjoy it. This what we should be thinking about, not us. Because we are, we're over here. We're over here. Kids in the community is the one that we should be thinking about. That's it.
Good evening. My name is King Rice. I'm a Bennington resident. I grew up in this neighborhood. Stayed in really, really many years in that gym right there. And I fought with a lot of the people in this room. I love this community. I love this park. I learned to ice skate in that park. I learned to swim in that park. I learned to become a young woman in that park. This neighborhood is every bit of who I am. I came up in a biracial family. My mother just happens to be Irish. My father is Jamaican and Asian. And we grew up directly across the street from Columbus Park. Where is the Kedro Street? We grew up, I'm going to say the town. We grew up with the Polish. We had a community, okay? I moved away for thirty years, vowing never to come back to this place. Until my brother, he would call me year after year. He would turn home and see the shape that this community is in and sit on the phone and cry. Look around before it probably is what we call Columbus Park. What we're in here arguing about. It ain't about the name. It's about the community. It's in shame. Let's care about the people. I don't care what you call the park, but let's get this thing together. It's an ill, if you, if you care if you're a citizen of Columbus, it's an ill representation every which direction you go. If we rename it, it's going to be an ill representation of whatever we named it. Unless something changes in this community. We, since I've been here, ten years I've been here, to come back and do my work in this community. We've had three cleanups in this park. And I can only count very few people who I've seen there. My office is strategically and graciously placed in this community. My friend Emile, the ad binds, allows me office space in her building because I want to be here. Not because I have to be here, but I want to be here. Because these kids around this corner are me. They are who I was. And if we don't help them, we're wasting our time. We have a community garden right there that binds, allows us to use. I'm just picking some broken seeds there today. I mean, I, I don't care what it's called. I really don't. I love Mr. Ranger Barton. He was a major, major component in my upbringing. The Italian folks had a major component in our upbringing. If it wasn't for this basketball court, my brother's life trajectory wouldn't have changed. I wouldn't have been able to come back and try to help somebody. So, let's not argue about this nonsense about the park name. Let's come together and see how we can work together as a community and improve lives here, okay?
So, I guess I'm going to finish this off. You start my four minutes. Because I heard a couple of questions in the parks. Who started this? Who's idea of this? That's a great question to ask. And so, answer that question simply to the NAACP. The NAACP decided to submit the RL because we want to capture a glory of history here that we've heard so much of tonight. It's, I think we've heard enough stories to know that it's impossible to say that this park belongs to one group. And I think that there's a false, there's a false idea that if the park's name is changed, it will cause divide. Because honestly speaking, there's already a divide. So, thinking of it, there's a saying that goes to the victory goes to spoils. That's history, that's how history happens as well. That those who win the battle, those who come out on top, they get to write the history. And so, what we see is that, you know, there's been a lot that the parks, not only the making of this park, not only into the people who live around the park. It has been left out. And I don't see my friend Ron, and he had to step out. But I agree with him as well that we haven't included the indigenous people. Indigenous community as well. But again, that's just a piece of why it's necessary. Because one thing about a name is that it carries identity. And so, that's why we have all personal names. Our, our personal names have meaning. And we carry that meaning with us wherever we go. And so, a name for a park, yes, it's small in the grander, grander scheme of things, but it's an identity that is overshadowing a lot of what Bennington has to offer. I'm sorry that I cannot say that I've been here as long as some of you, but I can say that one of the parts that hurt me the most was that if it wasn't for the Bennington Freedom Trail, I never would have known that this very spot that we're sitting in right now used to be Trinity AMZI. And I'm a pastor. How do I not know where our church located? But thank goodness to the work of Dr. Anne Bailey and Dr. Sharon Ryan, who was able to dig up that history and be able to promote it just so that we can say, okay, yes, we do have a place here in Bennington. Because at the end of the day, we want the identity of this area to reflect all of the people with laid claim here, that have lived here, that have played here, that have had so many fond memories here. But I think that if we take this opportunity to actually work together as a community group, I feel like we can do something right. I feel like we can change the spectrum of not only history, but have a way of changing the trajectory of young people's eyes, like Mr. Rice said. Because that's what we're really here for. We're here for the next generation. And it's important for the next generation to know that they have a space and a place here that welcomes them. And that's for everybody. Doesn't matter if you're Black, Italian, Jewish, Polish, Irish. Everyone also belongs. And that starts back in time. And that's why a name is important. So, how am I doing my four minutes? Okay? You know, Christians will get along with it sometimes. But, but I say, oh. But yeah, so, as, we stated earlier, no name has been decided. This point is just for us to see what the sentiment is, how do people feel? And then, now the work goes to, okay, what should be? And so, if you want to have your first voice heard that we have the survey, please, please, please fill it out. That's the best way to, to make sure you are part of this process for the whole. Because again, it was, what is it? But so, it was meant for us to do this as a community. So many people say, oh, no, it's going to be two committees. They're going to argue the whole time. It never be ending, but no. It doesn't last, he was adamant, saying, you know what? This is not a community conversation without the whole community. So, it was a point for everyone to be here. So, please, 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 you know, take time to fill the survey. Because we do want to see the immediate effort moving forward.
But I'm a, he's just on Columbus Park. I've been doing this for like five years. Captain, I'm from my father. I was working with year nine back then. I'm always still here. And I think he still works for me. But there should be an expansion of it. We're prepared that we should give other names to streets, to the streets and buildings and schools. Why just the heat on Columbus Park? We should open it up. I think if we talk, we just concentrate on Columbus Park and become a monument park. There's a bunch of monuments there. So, you can open up today the streets and then the schools, then other places for you to still have more, more information.
That's a very good suggestion. For our topic tonight, I think we can begin to start wrapping up. Is there anything else to close the box before we close the session? All right, good evening. We can leave our session for a while. We're going to pause. We made it, bro. They said keep it up. So, again, thank you all for coming. Please, a lot of survey. And please, I feel like my presentation was seen.